Preparing.
Hey Becky, Lex is asking to join the meeting.
Oh, I don't see. Okay. We are live. I don't know how to. I have a hard time renaming.
If you go to participants, it should pop up a screen and it should say who needs to be admitted.
I have a hard time naming.
If you go to participants.
Yeah, I'm in participants.
It should pop up a screen and it should say he needs to be admitted.
I have a hard time naming.
If you go to participants.
Yeah, I'm in participants.
Oh goodness.
It should pop up a screen and it should say he needs to be admitted.
I have a hard time naming.
If you go to participants.
Yeah, I'm in participants.
Oh goodness.
It should pop up a screen and it should say he needs to be admitted.
I'm just gonna email him real quick.
I'm in participants. Yeah, I'm in participants. I'm in participants.
Becky, mute yourself?
All right, it's 6:02. We have all members except one, please excuse. All trustees present, I hereby call the June 2021 meeting of the Albany Public Library Board of Trustees to order. Thank you for everyone attending in person and those attending virtually and those who will be watching the meeting. I'm going to turn the floor over to Rebecca Delguizot to tell us about how to make a comment.
Okay, so far we have not received any public comments. Anyone wishing to make a public comment is asked to. So far we have not received any public comments. They're asked to send an email to publiccomments@albanypubliclibrary.org. That's all one word, P-U-B-L-I-C-C-O-M-M-E-N-T@albanypubliclibrary.org. You could also call and leave a voicemail. No one will be answering that phone. It's just a voicemail number. And that phone number is 518-290-6905. You are asked to identify your name and where you live in Albany when you make your public comment. And there are two distinct areas in the meeting that public comments will be read. One is now and one is right before adjournment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The first item of business that we have tonight is Mr. Lex Tagath from the Friends and Foundation of Albany Public Library. He's going to be doing the biennial report of his organization. May I give it over to you, Lex?
Sure, thank you, Matt. Good evening, trustees. So, did you say biannual or biennial there, Matt?
I probably said it wrong.
Biennial, or correct. I was just thinking, I'm not sure exactly how long, but I feel like it's been two years since I last presented. There's some feedback from somebody's device. Rebecca is saying, can you all hear me okay? Okay, Matt can hear me okay, so. So yeah, I don't know if it was two years since I last presented the board. But so this evening, I'm going to give you all an overview of our activities in 2020, as well as a brief update on recent activities for this year. So for any new board members here who, I feel like you were all here when I presented last time, but just a reminder of the history of this old organization that has a new name. The Friends and Foundation of Albany Public Library was created in February 2020 after two years of discussion between the Friends of Albany Public Library, on the one hand, and the Albany Public Library Foundation. During those merger discussion meetings, by the way, we never talked about the question of a snappy nickname. We only came up with the acronym FFAPL. But in retrospect, we should have, because there is a human urge for nicknames that is stronger than the culture of acronyms. And we've noticed that library staff regularly call us either the Fapple or the Friendation. And at some point, we will embrace one or the other of those nicknames, or we will come up with our own nickname. I welcome all the trustees here tonight to suggest nicknames for us. But during this talk, I will just refer to us as the FFA. So 2020 began with the completion of our merger. We had a plan for rolling out our new name and our identity, beginning with National Library Week in April. As you all remember, library branches were closed in April, public programs were canceled. The library quickly pivoted to virtual programming during the pandemic. We began our pivot to virtual in May, rethinking at first how to present the Literary Legends fundraiser as a virtual event, which we modeled on the LA Public Library's Stay Home and Read a Book fundraiser. Our highlights of 2020 include the TUI Library Equity Fellowship, retooling the Internal Grant Program for Virtual Programming, the Keep Albany Connected Initiative, and pivoting to virtual with Art at APL and our Tuesday Book Talks. So first, the TUI Library Equity Fellowship was established to diversify the professional staff of the Albany Public Library to more closely represent the population of the city of Albany. The TUI Library Equity Fellowship was offered to two African-American students enrolled at the University of Albany, currently pursuing an MSIS. The program was scheduled to begin in June, but because of caution around the pandemic and general uncertainty, the program did not begin until September. Our very first TUI Library Equity Fellowships were awarded to two students, Savion Scott and Jonathan Mata. And library staff can tell you more about their time there. And I can share the final report for the thunder with any trustees who are curious about how the program was. The program was made possible thanks to a gift from the Carl Tui Foundation. We received $26,000 for the first year of the fellowship. We distributed 13,000 of that in 2020 and distributed the second 13,000 in January 2021 and hope to offer a second year of the fellowship. The annual appeal. The Friends, the Friends and Foundation of the Library conducts an annual appeal from December through March every year, soliciting donations from supporters and patrons. We distribute 85% of those annual appeal donations directly to support library programs, and we retain 15% for operating expenses. Since 2018, those funds have been awarded twice a year in April and November. But our April 2020 distribution was delayed due to the pandemic. So we distributed the funds in September 21 exclusively for virtual programs, increasing the maximum budget for programs to $1,500. We supported four programs, Questions of Representation, with at the Hal Branch, an online concert with Josh Greenberg and Friends, continuing one-on-one career coaching with Marshall Lazarus and the Project Lit Book Club. The, the annual appeal raised $15,083 in 2020. We distributed $11,925 of that. So that moves on to the Keep Albany Connected campaign. Expanding Wi-Fi access to outdoor areas and parking lots in the Albany Public Library became our special initiative. After the pivot to virtual, we launched a special campaign called Keep Albany Connected to raise money for Wi-Fi signal extenders at Albany Public Library branches. The campaign raised $2,275 from October through December. The, the board of the FFAPL then redirected $5,565 of annual appeal funds towards the campaign. So we were able to make a total gift of $8,000 to the library, which was paid in February 2021. Our biggest effort to pivot to virtual was holding the Literary Legends campaign. Literary Legends is our most important fundraiser at the Friends and Foundation. It was created to showcase outstanding people of letters in the capital region. The program recognizes local authors and publishers for their extraordinary contributions to the art of letters while raising need funds for library programs and services. Literary Legends raised $29,276 in 2020. We spent less than $2,000 last year on the gala, which is half of what we usually spend. We honored the writer Elisa Albert, and the library recognized their.
He's got on the lap, the laptop.
Yeah, exactly. Maybe open here, cause you need the hugs.
Hey Rebecca. I'll just keep going though. The, the, the library recognized the CEHC, the College of Homeland Security, as their outstanding community partner last year. We look forward to holding this year's Literary Legends Gala in person at the Pine Hills branch on October 16th, 2021. We are honoring the amazing authors Lydia Davis and Eugene Mirabelli. And the library will announce your community partner on June 23rd. Another great achievement of the pivot to virtual was our Tuesday Book Talk programs. For decades, the Friends of APL have presented Tuesday Book Talks at the Washington Ave branch. In June, the Friends programmers made the pivot to virtual and started doing the Tuesday Book Talks, beginning in August with a review by Scott. Since January 20, the first few months, it was only once a month. In, since January, it's been twice a month on the first and third Tuesday. And starting in June, the first Tuesday will now move outdoors and in person to the Bot Garden. The Tuesday Book Talk programmers are looking forward to returning to every Tuesday beginning this September, and are looking forward to guidance from the library on whether they should continue to do outdoor programming or make it all virtual, or if they're moving back to Washington Avenue. Tuesday Book Talks does not raise a lot of money. In the first few weeks of 2020, they raised a small amount of cash, about $100 a month. And that money went directly towards coffee and refreshments. The online book talks did not raise any money at all and did not cost any money. We are very thankful to the library staff for their support in providing the Zoom Pro account and for library staff providing technical support during the Tuesday talks. Finally, I'll just give you an update on Art at APL, which is a curated fine arts exhibition at the Pine Hills branch showcasing the work of contemporary artists connected to the capital region. This program began in 2013 and is funded by the Friends and Foundation of Albany Public Library. 2020 began with the exhibits, a melody with embedded harmonies and rear view still on view at Pine Hills. And then the Pine Hills branch closed. The Opalca Gallery, our presenting partner, proposed then an exhibit called Creative Curbsides that would present site-specific public artworks in the windows of Pine Hills, sorry, in the windows of Bach and Arbor Hill for the curbside patrons to come and see. So Opalca rolled that program out and it was amazing. They selected two artist duos, the duo Grace Lee Lawrence and Ben Saratan, and the duo Dana Sella and Kim Tateo. The program only spent $4,830 in fiscal year 2020. Our budget is $10,000, but I have to look at how much, how the overlaps of 2019, 2020, and 2021 spending work to see. I, I think most of the, I think we were just around at our $10,000 budget, but those funds were spent in 2021. So that's it for my 2020 highlights. A little peek towards 2021. We are looking forward to bringing back book sales. That was a big priority of our merger, was to start having quarterly book sales every year. Quarterly book sales have gone out the window with the pandemic. And now we are planning on having weekly book sales at Delaware Avenue, beginning June 22nd. Our special initiatives for 2021 are the, currently just the branching out program. Branching out is a, is a special program that is supported by a grant from the American Library Association and from the Center for Law and Justice. The ALA grant is supporting performances that will take place outside of three branches. The project is being managed by Tor. The CFLJ grant is for a portion called Branching Out Amplified Voices, which is going to create a mural in July that will be the backdrop of all those performances. And then we'll also travel to other regional libraries in Troy, Cahoes, and Schenectady. The Center for Law and Justice has paid $12,000 in support of that project. And the FFAPL has pledged $3,360 in matching costs for that project. So those are our special initiatives. And I hope I answer any questions about anything in my report. And I just want to make sure you all know to save the date, October 16th for our gala this year. And I hope to see you all there at Pine Hills. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lex. Does anybody have any questions for Lex?
I just want to say, great job pivoting in a very difficult year. The gala was more fun than I thought it would be.
It was fun. I liked the virtual. We have trustee Dallas with a question or.
My comment is, it's amazing how much you got done during the pandemic. And if this is a, an example of the work that you do under horrible circumstances, I can't wait to hear next year's report. Thank you for that informative presentation.
Well, I can only echo the sentiments of my colleagues here on the APL board. You've done amazing work and thank you so much for coming to present all the great things that you've been doing. We look forward to seeing all the great things that are coming up.
Thank you. I forgot to mention that the, for the Tuesday Book Talks, that the people who pivoted the Tuesday Book Talks to virtual will be on tomorrow at the UHLS annual, annual celebration as the volunteers of the year.
Oh fantastic. I plan to attend virtually. Well, if there are no further comments or questions for Lex, we can move on with the next portion of our meeting. Thank you again, Lex. Excellent work and thank you for your presentation.
See you next year.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. And Rebecca is bringing that up. Does anybody have anything they'd like to set aside for specific comments on the consent agenda? Checking, double checking. All right then. Since there are no set asides to the consent agenda, I need a motion from the floor to move to approve. Sorry, I, I moved to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion from Tom. And do we have the second? We have a second from Sarah Dallas. This is the time in rules of order for our last bit of comments or questions before we vote. Any, any further comments or questions before we vote? I'm thinking no. So without further ado, we can go to board docs and register our votes.
Sarah Dallas, please state your vote.
Aye.
All right then, the motion carries unanimously with all present. And we can move on to our next agenda item, which is an amp. And we are going to hear from Adam Stumpf.
Sure, so I'll just read from the memo that's under 5.1 on board docs. So the reports this month cover April 2021, which represents 83% of the way through the fiscal year. And a few key takeaways from these reports are as follows. We did receive about 62,000 in April from the city, which was the remainder of our 2020 pilot payment. So that left us with a total of about 454,000 for our 2020 pilot. The employee benefits line is currently still trending slightly over budget. And again, this is due in large part to significant HRA usage over the last several months. However, through April, each category of expenditures is trending under budget, except for payroll and related costs. And there were about 43,000 in capital fund expenditures recorded in April. And those were all related to work done at Pine Hills. That's it. If you have any questions, happy to address them.
Thank you, Adam. Do we have any questions for Adam? All right, just making sure I'm giving enough wait time here. Thank you for that review and summary, Adam. And usually these are not voting items. Did I get that right? So, thank you, Sarah. She's our parliamentarian in house. Thank you so much. And we can then move on to the items under item six, Committee Liaison Reports. We have trustee reporting out at 6.1. Do any trustees have anything they want to share about their library interaction?
I'm really excited to be in this building for the first time in a little more than a year. Look forward to coming back and using library services.
I agree, Karen. I was actually a little nervous, like it was stage fright or something coming here to do this. But it's a good thing, good thing. So it's great to be back. I'll give it like just a couple of seconds if somebody thinks of anything they want to say.
I'm also, I'm sorry. I'm also excited to be back in the building, 162 Washington Avenue or any high barry. But I just wanted to share that as my role at the housing authority, that hopefully through Scott and the staff at Pine Hills, they'll agree to, we can make determinations for summer food, a summer food program up there. So hopefully we'll have the, I'm going to have a meeting with the branch manager and Amy and a few others on Friday. So hopefully we can sort out the logistics and serve the children of that community.
This is also my first time back in the building. But I'm very much looking forward to the art exhibits that are coming. When Lex mentioned the rear view exhibit that was up prior to the pandemic, I remembered going to see that. So I always look forward to the art installations and exhibits at the library. And especially during the pandemic, they were very well done.
Great, thank you everybody. Great share. Are we ready to move on? No, Jenna?
Oh, I have, so speaking of just getting back in buildings, we're signed up for this weekend for the teddy bear picnic at Delaware branch. I'm really excited to go to a library. I mean, it's outside, but go to a live library program.
That's very exciting. And I understand it's quite rare to catch those study bears when they're having a picnic. So good for you. Thanks to the library for facilitating that. So with no further comments, we're trustee sharing out. Thank you again for the Upper Hudson Library Assistant Liaison Report. The one person who I announced was absent is our Upper Hudson Library Assistant Liaison. So we'll be skipping that report tonight and moving on to the Facilities Committee report.
Before we move on from that, you mentioned earlier, Lex mentioned the annual UHLS dinner, not dinner, celebrations. How do we attend that?
So I sent an email. We got the invite on the second. I forgot to send it out, so you should have in your Board of Trustees a link to attend that meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good catch, because that is coming up tomorrow. I had seen something in an email, so I forgot to announce where I saw that. I'm going to be getting some power from my computer while we move on to the facilities report.
Hi everybody. So the Facilities Committee met on May 13th. And we had a really productive meeting. We talked about three important things. First, we talked about the ongoing DOD construction grant projects that have been awarded in past years and are currently in implementation. And then we discussed the facilities plan, which is a written plan. Trustees is that had kind of been in development as an internal document. And trustees requested that we create a more presentable version that trustees can kind of look to as a snapshot of ongoing facilities projects. And so we reviewed that, and I think our committee was pretty happy with it. And I believe it is now available on board docs in the Facilities Committee section. So I encourage you to check that out. And I think we're gonna try to keep that as an ongoing updated document so that we can always know what the latest projects are whenever we. And then third, we discussed the ongoing construction of North Albany. We talked about, first of all, we talked about doing a walkthrough of the building in the near future, which all trustees will be invited to. I think we can send out the, the the date and time to all of you. So that'll be an in-person walkthrough of North Albany. We're gonna put in a second. Well, I should say, we also talked about how to communicate the construction and the reopening plan for North Albany to the community. So we've got some wheels turning on that. And I think we're headed in the right direction and, and we're committed to making sure we get our message out to the community that, about, you know, the timeline for the reopening and the construction and what, what the community can expect. So that was good. And we also talked about doing a walkthrough of Pine Hills to discuss some potential rearranging of some sections in the, in the coming year or so. And so that, that was pretty much our meeting to, to fellow committee members and content.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now? Okay, that we're going to be walking through North Albany on the 14th, or I believe the 15th, Tuesday, the 15th. Or I believe the fifteenth, Tuesday, the fifteenth, um, at five fifteen, right before our meeting. So to see what, um, what progress or what will be happening at that. So I agree with Tom that we did have a productive meeting as far as trying to get the information out to the community with signage and just being very visible and upfront um, to the residents in that community.
Thank you for that informative report. Do any other trustees have any questions or anything to add? Comments? We have trustee Sarah Dallas.
And we've not heard about last year's applications, but I believe the new portal is opening in a couple of days. I love that.
Okay, D L D, uh, Department of
What portal? The construction portal for the next round of grants.
And I always forget what D L D stands for, Department of
Department of Library Development.
All right. Thank you for that wonderful facilities committee. And with that, we can move on to the audit and finance committee.
Thanks, Matthew. Audit and, oh, it's good. Thanks. Um, audit and finance met on May twentieth. Uh, we had one item of business to discuss. Um, our council had drafted a request for proposal for our treasurer position. And, uh, we walked through it, um, page by page, um, and amended it as it needed. It talked through, uh, a few aspects of it and, um, things that we wanted. And, um, that proposal was posted, I believe, the following Monday. Uh, we are still actively receiving, um, R F Ps currently. Uh, the deadline to, for R F Ps to be submitted is Monday, which I believe is June fourteenth at four P M. So if anybody is watching this out there, um, and is interested in taking on a treasurer role, please check out our R F P. Uh, it is posted on the Albany Public Library website. Um, and with that, if any of, uh, my fellow committee members have anything to add, feel free.
And may I also open it up to any questions or comments for audit and finance? All right then. Uh, thank you so much for that work, audit and finance committee. Um, and I don't know if I thank facilities. Thank you so much for the work and recording both committees. And now we're on to our policy and governance committee that will be giving their
So the policy and governance committee, um, met to, uh, discuss a number of different policies that were up for review in our policy grid. One that we were going to present tonight, but actually we, we need to discuss more with Bob is, um, a new policy that is being created regarding hate speech that was modeled after a policy, um, that Cambridge Public Library had put together. We're not going to go into that policy tonight since it's actually not ready to present to the board, but, um, but essentially it was a, um, in its help to address some of the anti-racism initiatives at the library and some of the discussions we've been having around, um, meeting rooms and, and kind of making the space welcoming for the whole community. Um, we have, we talked about the room use policy again. Um, that is, um, we decided to keep as is, and so that's not going to be presented to the board tonight because it, we reviewed it and we decided to make no changes from the previous year. Um, we, I'm going, I have these printed out, which is why I'm not looking at all of you. Um, we, we do want to have a discussion with the board about the privacy and confidentiality policy. This has been an ongoing discussion. It was sent back to committee and we decided we, we really needed, um, the full board to kind of come to an agreement about how we want to pursue this. Right now, one of the issues that we're looking at is whether or not, and sort of the way that we, um, present interiors and exterior surveillance videos to the police. Um, it's being reviewed by council, but kind of keep in your minds and also if, if you do want to discuss at this point, how you feel about when, whether we should require a warrant to present exterior, um, uh, camera footage at the library to the police. And this is something that comes up fairly often and actually happened in the past couple of weeks. And while the policy is under review, we're erring on the side of caution, not presenting, um, that, that film material. Um, so then a couple of policies that we will need, um, to, to have the board vote on are the, um, public comment policy. Now this, there was no substantive change to the public comment policy. The reason that the board, um, needs to, uh, give its approval for the changes in language is because you'll notice under procedure, we've changed the procedure for giving public comment, and this is to make public comment more accessible. Um, now you can submit public comments via email. Um, we have that telephone line with voicemail that, um, that Becky monitors. So, um, this isn't a major change at all. It's just, we talked about the procedure for submitting public comment. Um, the other, sorry, I'm trying to go in order. Um, another policy that I'd like to bring your attention to, um, that we will need to vote on today is the evaluation of executive director policy. Again, we didn't make substantive changes here. Um, the one change that you'll notice is under, um, the timing of when we do the evaluation. In the policy, we said that we were doing the evaluation on the E D's anniversary day. That doesn't make a ton of sense based on the way that our fiscal year works. And so we've decided to change that policy so that the evaluation always happens when it's been happening anyway, at the end of the fiscal year. And then those all ones we're voting on? Yeah, sorry. I had a bunch printed out because I thought we were voting on more, but, um, but I think that, that that's, I want to open the floor up because I gave you a lot of information.
I, I just, uh, wanted to add that the, the, the evaluation of the executive director policy was a referral from the personnel committee. So the personal committee recommended that to the policy.
So do we, does that change the way we vote?
No.
Okay.
Okay, good, good, good. Um, I just wanted to mention in regards to the privacy policy that we did review. Which is going to legal is very important that, uh, we do have legal, take a good look at that policy. We have reviewed it, discussed it many times, but we do, um, need to have our legal counsel really take a good look at it. And where we stand from a legal aspect. So it's very important. We've discussed it many times and we do need that piece for this particular policy.
It does seem like we're going in circles on that. I feel like we're talking about it every time, but yeah, hopefully we'll get some solid guidance from, from Bob.
Were there any comments or questions for our policy and governance from the rest of the trustees? Well, uh, thank you so much for that work and thank you for the report. If people are really concerned or interested in some of the policies that are being set, as was mentioned, uh, earlier. The, uh, committee meetings are public and of course any trustee can join any meeting. So keep your eye out if you want to be involved in some of those, uh, policies coming up that are not going to be voted on today, but are going to be worked on soon. All right. Thank you, everybody. All committees and all chairs for sharing out and everybody who did all of that great work. Uh, now we're going to be moving on to the next part of our agenda.
Do, do we have to vote on these policies now or does that happen later in the meeting?
No, that'll be a little bit later, but now we know what's coming. Thank you. I'm bouncing back and forth. I think our executive director is next.
Yes. So looking back at May, our soft opening of Washington Avenue branch on May twenty-fourth, along with the full opening, has gone relatively smoothly. Uh, also Pine Hills began highlighting a new weekly service that will provide accessibility to any person seeking assistance from the court system. Uh, the Albany Housing Authority Wi-Fi sites have been turned on and the city Wi-Fi park Wi-Fi has been restored as well. Uh, trustee Strong had asked about the locations of the Albany Housing Authority Wi-Fi. They are five ninety South Pearl Street, Ezra Prentice Homes, forty-one Jennings Drive, North Albany Homes, two forty-one Green Street, which is Steamboat Springs Homes. These are in the courtyard or park areas of the complexes and they do not necessarily correspond with the mailing addresses of those locations. A future site for the Housing Authority Wi-Fi is two seventy North Pearl, I D Yarbo Homes. Uh, this location is in the final stages of construction and not turned on yet. But the lines have been installed and they are expecting completion this month. Statistics, uh, the number of items circulated and transactions went up from about six percent compared to last month. Bach and Pine Hills being the largest circulators. Reference transactions remain steady across the district. However, it's good to note that Hal right now makes up for twenty-three percent of all reference transactions. Uh, Bach is currently circulating just below the theory year average for the branch. So Bach circulation actually does not look very different than pre-pandemic levels. Information items, uh, attaches a memo to inform trustees on how we are moving forward, uh, with our community platform services. We have had discussions about how to phrase this. This is third place. This is people being in the library. We're going to call it community platform because that aligns with our strategic plan. So there is a memo in there. This was added today. It went out to the supervisors yesterday. We had a pretty good conversation about it, about how we're slowly going to be reintroducing, um, tables, chairs, study rooms and meeting rooms under phase four. Attached is also a customized report from the twenty twenty Public Library Technology Survey with some of the key metrics from this survey, uh, comparing our library to its peers. We actually stand out. We do relatively well. We're in line with the majority of our peers, uh, across the country. Uh, we have received a verbal confirmation from the Department of Library Development that they've accepted our request to expand, extend the deadline for central library hours to September first. I was supposed to get something in writing this week. I have not, um, but they, uh, Frank Reese over at D L D, who's kind of shepherding this part, has told me that we've been approved for that. Uh, trustee Strong wanted to know about staff analysis being done by the heads of branches and the budget manager. This work is on pause. Uh, it has been pushed back as a priority due to the need for us to reopen and reopen quickly. So we have gone back to hiring based on open positions for the time being as we continue to experience a trickle of resignations. As staffing is already low, we need all hands on deck to stay open in our current hours and move forward and open more hours. And that's it. I'll open the floor up to questions.
I just had a correction. Um, Steamboat Springs is Steamboat Square.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me here? But can you hear through the computer? Okay.
Scott, so numbers that I put in my comment correct?
Change. So, okay, I'm still on. Um, they change week to week.
Yeah, of course. Thanks. You know, I understand that, but I'm just, from a, from a broad perspective, you're basically down ten people. Get less than a hundred is different if you're all three clerks.
Yes.
Any further questions or comments with the executive director? All righty, hearing none. Uh, we can move on to the next items on our agenda. We have no unfinished business. But as Jenna prepared us, we have some new business, which, uh, much of it is the new policies that were discussed. So I'm going to go in order of what's on board docs. And the first one up is the evaluation of the executive director. Does anyone from policy and governance want to walk us through what was done? Just one more time.
Yeah, no. So this, there's really only a small change here. And that is that we are changing the time that we evaluate the executive director from being on that person's, um, anniversary date to the end of our fiscal year, um, which makes sense in case we want to make changes to their contract.
Thanks for reminding us. Sorry. I know you've just told us all of this, but I was just looking for a brief summary. Thanks so much. Do we have, can we get a motion from the floor to move this forward? Oh, we have this. I'm sorry. We have a motion from the committee. So do we have a second? Second advice, Sarah Shearer. Now is the time for further comments and questions. Sarah Dallas.
If it's coming from a committee, it doesn't need a second.
It doesn't need a second. Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Uh, sorry for the lapse in parliamentary procedure there. So this is the time to, uh, so thank you, uh, trustee Dallas. The committee has put it to the floor and it's a few seconds. Uh, this is the time before we vote to, uh, have our last comments and discussion on this item. Hearing none, I suggest we go to board docs and register. Oh, did you have another one, Sarah? Did you have another comment? So it looks like Rebecca Delgaisa will be fixing a couple of things behind the scenes for the minute. Correct. Making sure that the committee made the motion, brought it to the floor. And it was voted on. Wonderful. Uh, thank you, Rebecca. The motion carries unanimously with all presence. Uh, the next item up was nine point two, the policy change. Oh, that's been pulled. Sorry. Uh, we're not going to be voting on the, the hate speech policy and that's going to be reviewed again by, uh, policy and governance. So, uh, the next one up is the public comment policy, and I know this is also a very quick change. Um, Rebecca, if you could bring it up on the screen for us, please, we didn't get a chance.
So the change with this policy is, um, the procedure for submitting. So the change with this policy is, um, the procedure for submitting, uh, public comment. Um, we have a email public comment available, given the nature of our hybrid meetings. And we also have added, um, the ability to leave voicemails, um, for those who may not have a good level of digital access, um, as a means of, uh, public comment.
So this has been brought to the floor by a committee and now I know that we can vote on it. Before we go vote, it is, uh, the custom to share any last comments or questions about this one before we vote. I'm going to hold open for a couple of seconds. All right. Hearing no further comments or questions, I suggest we register our votes on board.
We need a second.
So we can't, so the, um, committee was the first. Oh, we still need a second. I don't know why I'm saying, okay.
That's the second, not a first. Mr. Finn will be listed as a first, um, only to open the voting.
Okay. As, as Sarah Dallas has pointed out, uh, we, we actually don't need a second when it's brought by committee. And I guess everybody agrees. Yes. So, uh, yeah, however you need to do that in, uh, board docs, we can open it up. That would be great. Thanks. And the motion carries unanimously with all present. Thank you very much. Uh, the next one up, 9.4, we're going to be talking about the revised 2021 central library budget. I'm guessing Scott will be walking us through this one.
I'm on mute. So why the change? Uh, we've already voted on this budget, but the original budget was built on the assumption of more significant funding cuts when the final enact of New York State budget was approved. Uh, UHLS found themselves in a good spot, uh, of having more central library money than planned. So they're provoke, they have, uh, proposed a revision that both the committee and the board of the Upper Hudson Library System has accepted. Um, the additional money gives, uh, us the opportunity to add back to the state system wide ancestry subscription, which is extremely popular, uh, to restore. So give us full funding back to the APL staffing line and also put more money into nonfiction e-content. So it's good news, but since there's a revision, this board needs to pass it.
Thank you for that. Sorry, I have my computer completely muted there for a second. Thank you for that, uh, update and the good news on the budget. Uh, can we get a motion from the floor to approve, uh, Sarah Dallas first and second from Jenna Patera? This is the time for, uh, any comments or questions before we vote. Question from trustee Strong.
So this is great news. Um, I'm wondering how it affects the, our library budget.
It's minimal. It's a few thousand dollars. Uh, I think it'll be $12,000 if I'm not, uh, it was 20% off. It was 20% from last year. So that was about 6,000 back of the envelope and then restoration of this year. So it's not huge, but it's nice to have a little bit of extra money. This is not going to save the fund balance. So.
All right. Uh, since it's been moved and seconded and commented upon, uh, we can now, I suggest we go to board docs and register. And the motion carries unanimously with all presence. Thank you very much. Uh, item 9.5, we'll be hearing from Scott about library hours.
I'm sorry. Uh, what I want to say to the board is that at this point, hiring is now our biggest impediment to reopening. I was on a call with central library directors from across the state and several of those central library directors are actually dealing with the same issues. Uh, we seem to have a resignation where a position open almost weekly. Uh, there's a resignation coming. Full-time positions, this is good news. Full-time positions that are opening up are being filled internally by part-time staff, which is positive. However, many of these positions are weekend and evening shifts, so it makes it a little bit more difficult to, uh, fill them. It takes close to a month to fill all positions. We've talked about this several times. That has to do with civil service and the fact that not only are our full-time positions, um, not only are our full-time positions competitive, but also our part-time positions are competitive, which is not necessarily the norm across the state. Uh, and we've advocated for years to have that change, uh, which, you know, we're, the exam, civil service, competitive wages, because now everybody is paying more than we are, um, along with a low labor participation rate has kind of made for a perfect storm. Uh, we run a lean organization to begin with. So that means losing one or two employees can significantly impact a week locations, evening and weekend shifts. So sometimes we have locations that are operating with two to three people because someone is called in sick, which is not safe, not optimal. Um, all it takes is us to lose one or two employees to not be able to open those branches. That's what we are close to right now. Um, and again, this is a trend that we're seeing, uh, across the country in private businesses. Uh, but libraries are definitely feeling this because whereas a library clerk position was really, uh, attractive, now you can make the same amount of money without taking a civil service exam or waiting on a civil service list. So that's our biggest impediment. I mean, other than that, our planning, our safety plan, everything is in place. It's been working really, really well. That's not what's stopping us at this point. So these hours are reflective of that. There's a shift at our Washington Avenue hours. Um, the lack of return of state and county employees has made daytimes here slow. So we'd like to shift to an evening hour to see if we can get more people in the evening, especially with the fact that we are opening up our meeting rooms. And, you know, as we've had a discussion with this group in the past, the, the business that we do here is during the state, during the day with state and county employees, people that we serve within the two communities that we primarily serve here. But also evenings are meetings. Our meetings are what bring people in the door. And we know that. So our hope is if we shift the hours, we can get some community meetings in the door and that'll start bringing more traffic in. Um, but, you know, I look at the numbers for this location and I'm a little worried. So we have to kind of make this shift to see if we can get some more nighttime people in, um, and see if that, we can at least get that business going until the state and county employees are.
Thank you so much, Scott. And we've all had a chance to take a quick look at this, but they walked through, really helped us understand what's going on there. Does anybody have questions? I see trustee Strong.
So, uh, thanks for this. And I think the additional evening is great, um, and will help, but it's only been open for a week. So it's going to take time for people to remember it's open and to show up. And some people are showing up during the day for story times or even all that stuff. So I think it's just going to take some time for people to come, come back. So don't get ready to, you know, I'm sure the numbers will come back eventually.
Good point. Good point. And we'll also have some discussion time. Uh, just before we vote, I see a hand up from trustee.
Hi. Um, I want to just register my concern. I don't think it's safe to have only two people or three people in the building. That means people can't take lunch. They can't go to the restroom. Um, it's just not a safe situation. Uh, I know that the North Albany branch is not currently open. I'm guessing those employees have been re-allocated to other buildings. And then the last question, I'll get them all done at once. What are the reasons people are resigning? Because of the salary?
No, it's, you know, in the beginning, it was individuals who were not comfortable working in public service. And it seems to be people don't come to that realization until we slowly open more and more. So you kind of get people who were unsure about, that this happens with our part-time employees particularly. Um, now that we're open more evenings, people are, say, aren't able to work evening shifts who were able to work evening shifts in the past. I think what we find a lot of our employees, this is a second job. This is, um, a, a post-retirement position, which is ideal. But what's happening is I think a lot of people are realizing that maybe they don't want the second job anymore. That playing cards and going golfing in retirement is more fun than a second job. So it's kind of a, it's, it's kind of a huge collection. And then there's also an additional pressure, which is we have a lot of parents who work for Albany Public Library. Um, and as we know, you know, it is still schools are, 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 some are closed. Some parents aren't comfortable with their, their kids going to school just yet. So we're also seeing some pressure, not only in people, part-time people leaving part-time positions, but also our full-time employees still having this pressure from home and not necessarily being available at certain times of the day. So it's, you name it. If, if, if you can think of an issue, it's, it's health concerns. It's not wanting to, you know, to, to work with the public anymore. It's not wanting to have a post-retirement position or a second job. It's maybe finding a few positions that are more money. Um, what we're also seeing is openings, because like today, our senior clerk left at our Bach branch and we filled that position with a clerk here, but now we're, now we have an empty clerk position. It's great. This individual is fantastic. We're excited to have him be a senior clerk, but that now means that we have to fill that position here. And even if we fill that position internally, that creates a new hole. So it's just, if you name it, we're probably experiencing it when it comes to staffing.
We made any progress with the service? Oh, I'm sorry.
Scott, you mentioned that you did not think that salary was a part of that. That's the basic salary for the clerk. And wouldn't you think salary is part of them leaving?
I don't think salary is part of them leaving. What I think is salary is impacting is the attraction for people to come and work for us. So, you know, if you're, um, if you're looking at a part-time position where you don't have to take a test and you don't have to be put on a civil service list, it is so much easier to get a position somewhere else where you don't have to jump through all those hoops. And it's probably a dollar to $2 more an hour. Um, I've seen anywhere where the listings for part-time positions in retail, uh, which is similar to being a library clerk, is now more than what library clerks make here.
Yeah, that's kind of what I felt. I do think that when we look at retention, salary is a part of retention. So you can't, um, turn the blind eye to that as well. To get them in the door and keep them here, salary certainly is a factor.
Have we made any progress on the part-time civil, on making part-time civil service clerkships non-competitive? Is there a, no, uh, sorry. Is there a way? Like, I know that we've just been asking and having them review it.
Um. I, that was, that was, that was needed levity. So thank, thank them. Hello. Um.
Say hi once we'll stop. Here, say hi.
Hi.
Hi. So, um, no, we haven't. Uh, there's been a significant amount of turnaround at the Human Resources Department with the city. Um, so every time we gained a little bit of traction, uh, we lose traction. Um, I know that our Human Resources Department rings it up whenever they meet with them. Uh, really has to do with the committee, the Oversight Committee of, of Human Resources and whether or not they're willing to change those regulations. Uh, they do have a meeting on the 29th of this month that I'm going to ask to speak again at. Um, and I will be reaching out to the common council member who oversees civil service as well and kind of bending their ear about it. Um, this is something that I'm going to focus on over the next few months to try to see if we can, if we can get this changed. From what I understand is there's concerns about patronage. Uh, we have to alleviate those concerns and also show that this is kind of the norm at other public libraries that work through civil service.
And do we have any flexibility on salary? I.
We do not. What's baked into the contract is baked into the contract. The, the good news is that the contract is coming up for negotiation soon.
These are all amazingly great questions and, and good points to be bringing up. I'm going to hold open for a few more seconds in case people have something else to say. And at this point, I'd like to see if we can get a motion from the floor to approve these hours. So moved, uh, Sarah Shearer, uh, second.
I'll second.
By Karen Strong. Uh, this is the one last time when we have, if we have something to say, says, this is when you should say it. Any other comments or questions? All righty, hearing none. Yes. Was it, was there anything? That was just someone moving on their camera. Okay. Hearing none, uh, I suggest we register. I was so good. Thank you, Sarah Shearer. The motion carries unanimously with all presence. Thank you so much. Uh, the next and last item in new business is the, uh, results from the quarterly board evaluation. So, uh, Rebecca, if you want to bring that up on the screen, I don't want to dwell on this, um, but we should probably take a look at it. And it's fairly tiny on the screen, but you can see it if you click on it in board docs. So, uh, the choices on this form were okay or needs improvement. So it's pretty easy to see. We got quite a bit of okay's, but we do have areas where we needed improvement. This last, the last meeting was commented on a lot, although it is quarterly evaluation, um, where I had tried to make the meeting more efficient. And I, I spoke to Scott about this afterwards. I didn't mean to, uh, make anybody feel like they couldn't talk. But I also have compiled, uh, a list of the times of our meetings, which some of them were well over two hours. So that meeting where I put, I set a couple of limits in certain places lasted, I think, an hour and 40 minutes, which is our shortest meeting in something like a year. So I know people get really tired and it's hard for the board to function well when things go long. So, um, I, I think, you know, something we need to work on, a balance of having everybody speak with, uh, or at least share their thoughts at, in some way, um, and being able to respect everybody's time so we don't go crazy overboard. Does anybody have any comments or questions about the board evaluation? All righty, hearing none, I suggest we move on to item 10, pandemic operations. And thank you, everybody, for participating in the evaluation.
Matthew, do you want me to speak, Matthew? Yeah. So we're not asking for any change to the current safety plan. We do, we are aware that the governor has set a 70% for the lifting of state restrictions. So my only feeling on that is we may have to have an emergency meeting. However, right now, based on mass, based on feedback, which is noted in the memorandum, in the memo that is in Board Docs, people have been generally compliant and positive about masks and the fact that we're asking individuals to wear masks. Of course, the Friday that I sent my usual weekly update, the minute I hit send, I got an incident report for someone not being compliant with masks, which it was literally like within 45 minutes. But overall, that's the only, that's the only report I've gotten or that's the only that I've gotten about an individual not being mask compliant. For the most part, our staff have just been getting positive feedback, a few people who have crumbled. And then online, it's been mostly positive, except for maybe a comment about Melville Dewey, which I believe Melville Dewey would be anti-mask and would not believe in the pandemic. So that's okay. But other than that, I mean, it's really been across the board, well-accepted. We haven't had many issues. I guess I've so far, I think, one to two incident reports after I sent the email out that Friday. There was one email from a former employee who lives in Menance. And that person was anti-mask and shared their, shared their opinion.
I don't even understand the Dewey. Yeah.
So if the governor lifts a 70% statewide first vaccination, if the government, governor lifts restrictions, we obviously could still do what we think is right for our community. One thing I asked last time, and it would be good if we can get this, I don't even know how, is what the rate is for not just Albany County, but Albany City? We know that there's disparities and lack of access to vaccines. And so I think we should, if we can use that as a benchmark rather than the state or the county, that would be helpful.
Thank you, everybody, for that discussion. Does anybody else want to chime in on the masks or any updates that Scott just gave?
I just would like to add, just listening to the comment in regards to the city data and the county data, I think that county data is more readily available, whether folks feel is accurate or not accurate. So it's kind of difficult to base decisions on city, city data. It was that difficult to obtain. So we have a county health department, not a city health department. So I think we need to take that into consideration as well. I wish I could do it.
You'd be great at it.
That's a great way to look at it so we know what's going on there and why it's, why it is the way it is currently. And trustee.
I actually do happen to have the numbers in front of me. I went on the tracker website the other day. So for Albany County, percentage of 18-plus population with at least one vaccine dose for Albany County is 73.6%. And then the total population, which is including people below 18 as well, for Albany County, that's at 62.9%.
And again, I just would like to state, city data and county data can have huge disparities. And county does not reflect what's going on in the city and underserved areas of Albany, especially our lower wards. So I just want to make sure that we are well aware of that.
Dr. Robinson, what would you recommend if you're thinking about looking forward and mask mandates and all that stuff? Any?
Um, for me, I feel that having county data is important as well, but we also know the disparities within our community. So we just can't turn a blind eye, whether we have concrete numbers in our hand. And as we've seen in the past, sometimes we have numbers that are not accurate at all. So being that we know for sure that there is a disparity, it's been decades of disparities, whether we're talking about COVID-19 or chronic diseases, we need to act accordingly. So we don't need to see numbers going across the screen or on a spreadsheet. We know this to be true, so we need to act accordingly. So I think making decisions based on that will certainly put us in the right direction.
You're especially lucky on our board to have expertise built in. Thank you, Dr. Robinson.
That's true. Great. It's great that we have you here. Thank goodness. And does anybody have any other additions to this discussion?
I just feel relief that this wasn't something that caused major conflict for our clerks. That was something that I was worried about as we made our decision. But knowing that generally they haven't had major issues is, is a relief.
Agreed. So hearing no further comments or questions, we should be able to move on to the second public comment of the evening. And Rebecca Delgado can tell us if anyone has chimed in.
We have not received any public comments. Again, people can send an email or call. All of the information is on our website as well.
All righty, thank you so much. So we do have something to discuss in executive session. I'll be looking for a motion from the floor to move into executive session.
Actually, Matthew, I have one thing I just wanted to say before we go into executive session, if that's okay?
Yes.
So I just wanted to make a note that tonight is actually the last board meeting for two of our trustees. They will be finishing their five-year terms on our board. It's our current president, Matthew Finn, and Karen Strong, who served as our president for the prior three years. So now our, only are we losing two trustees. We're losing two presidents in one night. But I just want to thank both of them for everything they've done for this board over the last five years. Karen was, you know, such a huge influence and I think so dynamic as our president, so involved with the strategic plan. I think we really have, have to thank her for a lot of our current board policies. And I know Matthew had served for years as our UHL Last Representative. And, you know, just with your expertise you bring to the board with being a librarian and a teacher yourself, just the two of you are both going to be missed so much.
Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And I want to echo your sentiments about Karen. I couldn't have been president this year without Karen's coaching, which was amazing. First of all, her modeling how to be president in those prior three years and then actually literally walking me by hands or taking my, by the hand to walk me through how to do it. I mean, many a month. And I have to add that I have been re-elected. You're not quite rid of me yet.
I remembered that halfway through.
That's okay. I'm still super, super touched and, but I'll be here going forward. But Karen, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, thank you so much. It's been such a privilege and an honor to serve with all of you. I'm really glad I got to be in person with most of you for our last meeting. I've missed you. I've enjoyed working with you. You inspire me all the time. And I really enjoyed my time here and hope I made a little difference. So thanks so much.
Big difference. Wow, that was super touching. And it seems weird to go on with, with our next thing. But we have to move on. And, and we can also, you know, at a certain point, we can get together ourselves and thank Karen. But I think in order to move on with our agenda for the public, we should go, I should look for a motion to go into executive session. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
All righty, trustee McCarthy moves to go to executive session. Do we have a second? Thank you. I see trustee Pryor seconded. Sorry, they were both near each other, but I thought Brigitte stands first. So we do, is there any comment or discussion before we move into executive session, before we vote?
You should just say the purpose of the executive session.
Really good. See, see what I mean when she coaches me? So the, the reason we're moving into executive session is it's annual review time for our executive director. So much of the work has been done through surveys of the trustees. And we, and that's been compiled by the fabulous personnel committee. And they're going to share it out with us. We'll have one final discussion before we share it with Scott. So that said, I suggest we go to our board docs and register our votes to go into executive session.
Becky, do you want to give me the hosting rights? And I'll do that.
Sarah Dallas, please state your vote or enter into Board Docs.
All righty, then. The motion to move into executive session to discuss the annual evaluation of the executive director has carried unanimously with all present.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.[849.88]
Melanie. Oh, there she is. Melanie is there. Melanie is there. Yeah, she's on. Hi, Melanie. Okay.
Hello.
Okay, so now we can adjourn. She's on her computer.
Alright, so we took care of what we needed to do in executive session. I'd like to get a motion on the floor to adjourn the meeting.
I saw that.
So we have trustee Dr. Robinson made the motion and trustee Prior seconded. Thank you very much. All in, well, discussion, discussion. All in favor, shall we? We did a voice and vision. It's unanimous. We have adjourned. Alright, does anybody need me to stay on the meet for anything?
Okay, good night, everybody.
Okay.
Good night.
Bye-bye.